This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us today for the July 1, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Can we start with a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Aguilar.
Here.
Commissioner Lassard is absent. Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Gutierrez. Commissioner Gilmore.
President.
Commissioner Holman.
Here.
We have five present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Meredith. All right, if, Mr. Henderson, could you help us with the swearing in of the audience, please?
Sure. Please, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, under perjury, under penalty of perjury? Say, "I do." Sorry about the mess up.
Thank you, folks. Commissioners, before you have an agenda presented, if you've had a second to review, accept a motion.
Salute.
I have a motion from Commissioner Holman and a second from Commissioner Henderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, here we have the minutes for our June 10, 2025 PNZ Commission Meeting presented. If everybody's had a minute to take a look at them, if there are no edits, I'll take a motion.
Salute. Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Gutierrez and a second from Commissioner Holman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on. So we're going to go on to action items. We have a public hearing item, CAN 25-0063, which is a request for approval of a variance to residential distance requirements, zone change to CCAN, and conditional use permit to operate an adult-use retail cannabis establishment at 3107 North Main Street, Unit B. It's in the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. Okay, Meredith, we'll read the findings of the facts. Wonderful. Ms. Hildreth.
Good evening, Chair Aguilar, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here this evening on July 1, 2025. We apologize for the technical difficulties here. The first case is public hearing number F1 for 3107 North Main Street, Unit B. It's a request for approval of a variance, zone change to CCAN, which means commercial cannabis, and conditional use permit to operate an adult-use retail cannabis establishment. Zoning case CAN-25-0063. Slide number four on your first page there. This is a request for approval of a variance for property in C2 with respect to distance to R1 and R3 residential districts within 300 feet, a zone change to CCAN, a floating zone, commercial cannabis, and the conditional use permit to operate an adult-use cannabis retail or establishment at 3107 North Main Street, Unit B. Slide number five, the first one on second page. Is this staff photo of property under consideration for the Greenhouse Roswell at 3107 North Main Street, Unit B? This is on the east side of North Main Street in the 3100 block. It's just north of Blake's Restaurant. Then the next slide is the zoning map showing the location in the C2 Community Commercial. And the little blue arrow on the pointing to Brian's Green Care, Brian's Green Care closed. So in your packet, you see photos of it being closed and the tenant space being under lease or for lease. And then on the other green arrow shows that the, there's about an 80-foot wide strip of both commercial property and a 25-foot wide alley totaling about 80 feet between the property under consideration and Linda Vista Estates, the residential subdivision to the east. Next slide shows the 2016 Conference of Master Plan Future Land Use scenario showing the property is in the North Main Street Commercial Corridor. And as of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Division has received one written protest, zero inquiries for case CAN-25-0063, and that protest letter is Exhibit I in the meeting packet. The municipal code Chapter 27 Cannabis, the underlying C2 Community Commercial zoning is designated to accept the CCAN, commercial cannabis floating zone. And under section, under page 17 of your packet shows the information from Chapter 27. The CCAN zoning designation is intended to provide for a variety of commercial and retail cannabis establishments, including onsite consumption of cannabis products. So, but not in this case. They did not request that. It's only for retail sale. Section 27-65 of the municipal code specifies cannabis-related businesses be located a minimum quarter-mile, 1,320 feet from, distance from each other, and the business under consideration at 3107 North Main Street meets this minimum distance requirement and measures approximately 4,200 feet from R. Greenleaf at 4311 North Main Street, approximately 2,290 feet from Nomad at 3606 North Main Street and Starlight Plaza, and approximately 2,360 feet from Ultra Health at 2,800 North Main Street and Adobe Plaza. These are the nearest active retail cannabis establishments to the property under consideration. And as I mentioned before, Brian's Green Care located across the street at 3108 North Main Street has permanently closed, and I provided photos for you on page 18. Staff photos of that closure. The variance request is the property under consideration is within 300 feet of Linda Vista Residential Subdivision, Zoned R1 and R3 residential. You can see that on the zoning map provided on the slide and also in the packet. A variance is requested to the 300-foot distance requirements to residential zoning districts stipulating Chapter 27 municipal code that states prohibited locations and activities, Section 27-65, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community's most vulnerable populations, particularly children, seniors, and individuals who struggle with neurochemical dependencies. No cannabis-related businesses shall be permitted within 300 feet of all schools, parks, churches, recreation facilities, childcare facilities, military facilities, senior care facilities, retirement facilities, and medical facilities. Cannabis-related businesses shall not be permitted within 300 feet of any mental health centers, addiction centers, or rehabilitation facilities within 300 feet of any residential district measured from the exterior property line to exterior property line, and this includes the following residential zones: RS, RL, RVL, R1, R2, R3, R4, MUP, RMS, MHC, and RVP. Cannabis-related businesses must maintain a reasonable separation distance of at least one-quarter mile, 1,320 feet from one cannabis-related business to another. This is measured from the nearest outside wall to outside wall of the building. So that is the variance request consideration there in the finding, or the land use and zoning considerations. The zone change request under D on page 19, retail cannabis establishments are required to obtain a zone change to CCAN, commercial cannabis floating zone per city ordinance, Chapter 27. And then we're just going to move on to page 20, the conditional use permit request. Retail cannabis establishments are required to obtain a conditional use permit per city ordinance, Chapter 27. And that permit allows property owners to utilize their properties for uses not listed as being permitted or allowable by right under the site's current zoning designation. Conditional use permits for cannabis-related businesses correspond to the facility's location. These permits are applicable at the designated site of the cannabis-related business and cannot be transferred if the business chooses to change locations within the city. And you can see Appendix F, the draft conditions of approval. And those were supposed to be in the packet, and, but they are on your dais. The applicant has provided the following documents: Exhibit G, the Anna McCann State of New Mexico Cannabis Retailer License, and Exhibit H, the Greenhouse Roswell Dispensary Business Plan. There are legal standards on page 21. Just want to point those out. For a zoning variance in New Mexico requires the applicant to demonstrate unnecessary hardship. This involves showing that the parcel in question is distinguishable from other properties subject to the same zoning restrictions, and the requested variance is appropriate. So additionally, the body considering the variance must determine whether the condition or use of the property makes it exceptional in the sense that the application of zoning restrictions affects a property more harshly than other properties under the ordinance, thereby creating a particular hardship that deprives the owner of a reasonable return. So on, in your slide deck here, there's, I added a slide for legal standard for a zoning variance. So bullet point one, applicant must demonstrate unnecessary hardship. Bullet point two, a strict application of the distance requirement would require an extraordinary hardship due to unique circumstances. And three, a variance is necessary to overcome these difficulties. And if you recall, many cannabis cases have come before you requesting a variance to the distance to residential. Okay, and the findings of fact, conclusion of law, that a notice of the time and place of the public hearing for this case was published in the Roswell Daily Record at least 15 days prior to the date of this hearing. Two notifications of the public hearing were mailed via certified mail with return receipt requested to property owners of record, as shown by the Chavez County Assessment Map with lots or land within 300 feet of the area under consideration excluding public rights of way. Number three, this agenda, which includes this case, has been posted at City Hall and on the city of Roswell's website for over 72 hours as required by state of New Mexico law for a public hearing. Four, as the time of this writing, the Planning and Zoning Office has received one written protest. Five, the property owner, or property under consideration is currently within the jurisdiction of the city of Roswell, New Mexico. Six, Chapter 27 of the Roswell Municipal Code regulates all projects related to the cannabis within the city of Roswell. And seven, the land is compatible with the 2016 Conference of Master Plan Preferred Land Use Scenario Map that indicates a property under consideration is located with the North Main Street Commercial Corridor. And so your action as a Planning and Zoning Commission is to make a motion to recommend either approval or denial or no or no recommendation to City Council. And I stand for questions, and we do have the Greenhouse with us this evening to tell you a little bit more and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Hildreth. I have one quick question, and just to clarify, this is retail only, not onsite consumption?
This is only retail.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions of Ms. Hildreth or staff?
I have, I was looking at their plan, their business plan, and it mentioned that their hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Is that in keeping with the time limit that we have in our ordinance?
No, sir. They will have to adhere to Exhibit F, the conditional the conditional permit until such time that the City Council revises that standard. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions of Ms. Hildreth? All right, moving on. Thank you. All right, let me see. Anybody in the public wishing to speak in favor of case CAN 25-0063? Please come forward, state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Jeremy Bonin, 729 Harmon Avenue. That's in Pagosa Springs, Colorado. I'm one of the owners of Anna McCann, Inc., doing business as the Greenhouse. We have five other locations in New Mexico, including one in Hobbs. So we come down this way pretty often, and the owners are very hands-on. We've been looking for a location in Roswell for a couple of years now, and when we found out that Brian's had closed their doors, we came down and found the location across the street. We figured, because it's falls in under the zoning that Brian's basically did, other than this requirement to get a variance for our location close to residential. Other than that, we figured it would fall into all the rest of the zoning requirements. So we thought we would try to move on it, and here we are, asking for your approval.
Okay.
Can I ask, is this a leased property, or did you purchase the property?
It's a leased property. We have had negotiations with the owners about purchasing it.
So it being a lease, and there being other lease spaces, what, what in particular makes this space necessary, and how do you, how do you show that you're, you know, somehow overcoming that unnecessary hardship?
As I said, we've been looking for a location here for about two years, and between finding a place that has suitable structure, if you will, and not having to completely remodel a building, and even then, it was hard to find a place, especially zoned, the zoning distance between dispensaries, between other cannabis businesses, that made it very challenging. And so Brian's location was good, but this building across the street, it was a little larger. It meets our needs much more, much better. The access was much better, and parking, and all those things. So it's been very challenging to find a location in Roswell.
But that, that spot where Brian's is, is currently for lease, and it is, it's 300 feet away from residential?
No, it's not. They had a, they had a variance also to residential. So we kind of figured it was six, one-half dozen, because we were going to have to come and request this variance for Brian's location as well.
Okay, thanks.
If I make a, made a comment, I think Brian's was around before, when it was only medical. Is that correct? And I think when they, when they opened for adult use, and they got a vice license, and I don't know if there were different zoning back then, or, because I remember it had been there for quite a while.
I believe they were here for medical, but I also know that almost, well, most of the other cannabis businesses in Roswell have been granted this variance. I believe I heard Oasis was very close to residential.
Were you going to say something, Meredith? No? Okay. All right. Any other questions? Staff? Nope. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of CAN 25-0063? Come forward, sir. State your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Duane Baird. I reside at 138 Squirrel Drive, as well as Jeremy in Pagosa Springs. I've been working for the Greenhouse for about nine years now, and I just want to say, when I came on board, one of the things that, that really draw me to this company, draw me to their attention, was their attention to detail, their attention to compliance, or, or I'm using the wrong words, my apologies, but their, their commitment to working with the municipalities that we're in, the neighborhoods that we're in, making sure that we are a community guideline, not a community sore spot. So we work very hard at, at working with the community, making sure we're an established helping the community with, with security, but also providing a service and providing a product that the community needs.
Cool. Any questions of Mr. Baird? No? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right, moving on. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of case CAN 25-063? We're good? Okay, how's, Chair of Meredith? Okay. Thank you. So nobody else? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition of case CAN 25-0063? Or who have questions or concerns? Nobody else here? Going once, going twice? All right. Awesome. Commissioners, I'd, uh, accept a motion. I think the motion is always in the positive anyway, isn't it, or?
Could be approval or denial.
Yeah.
I was just waiting for somebody else to make the motion.
Well, I would move the, the approval of case CAN 25-063 for recommenda, this is a recommendation to the council.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Henderson?
Please clarify. Please clarify the motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henderson to recommend approval of case CAN 25-0063 to City Council. Hmm? I'm sorry? We need a second still. We don't have a second.
Well, in all fairness, I think these guys deserve an up and down vote.
We don't have a second? Does it just die, or what do we do? Now, you also mentioned, we can also not make a recommendation? Or? Okay. Okay, we'll give it a couple more seconds.
If that motion doesn't give a second, can I get a second motion for denial?
You, you can make another motion. I would recommend that you please give reasoning if, if that's where we're headed.
If there will be no seconds, entertain another motion.
Okay, so based on the land use and zoning considerations, findings of fact, conclusions of laws surrounding land uses, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, and the following reasons for the proximity to residential within 300 feet of this establishment, I would motion to recommend, recommend denial of case CAN 25-0063 to City Council.
We have a motion from Commissioner Holman to deny to deny recommendation of case CAN 25-0063 to City Council. Is there a second?
Salute.
I have a second from Commissioner Gutierrez. Would you like a roll call vote? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Henderson?
No.
Commissioner Gilmore?
What does "no" mean in this case? Is he's?
So no means that
Approval or denial?
So so no means that you don't agree with the motion. Yes means you agree with the motion. The motion was to recommend denial. So a yes would be to recommend denial, and no would be to not recommend denial.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes, I agree with the motion.
Commissioner Holman? Chair Aguilar?
Yes.
All right, so the motion to recommend denial passes four to one.
Okay. Could we tell the applicant the process for appeals?
There's no appeal process yet. This is just a recommendation to City Council, so City Council still has to make their determination. So they can take this into consideration, or they cannot. It's simply a recommendation. So from that point, after City Council will make a decision, then there would be the appeal process, but we're not there yet. appeal process, but we're not there yet.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to number two. Case VAR-25-0059.
Just a second.
Sorry?
For the record, I need you all to please provide reasonings for your motion and your votes.
10-4. I think Commissioner Holman mentioned his.
Yeah, same, same as my motion. I, I, I don't think we need to waive the 300 foot from residential.
Commissioner Gutierrez, you need one from every one of us? Or just the general? Just two? Commissioner Gutierrez, do you have any other additional comments that hasn't been already talked about?
No, I also agree that the proximity of the proposed establishment goes against the, the regulations originally established in terms of the, the distance.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilmore?
Um, after reading the email from, um, a local, um, a local nearby resident, I believe that, that it would, um, that the alleyways have been pretty heavy since Blake's opened. And I think that traffic would increase the alleyways as well.
Thank you. Does that suffice two reasons, sir? Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioners. Hey, moving on. Number two. Case VAR 25-0059, request for approval of variance to property line setbacks for new building construction along the east side of a property located at 900 to 908 North Virginia in an I-1 light industrial zoning district.
Okay, Commissioners, um, Chair Aguilar, Commissioners, the F2 is a public hearing item, F2, for 900 to 908 North Virginia Avenue, a request for a variance to property line setbacks for a new building. On your slide deck, you have the zoning map for the property under consideration. It's owned I-1 light industrial. It's in an industrial corridor. It's adjacent to a commercial corridor. And the property under consideration is in the revised railroad district MRA, which is a metropolitan redevelopment area adopted by City Council in April 2020. You also have in your packet and also in the slide deck, a conceptual site plan of the proposed 10,240 square foot building with 14 truck fleet service bays at 90908 North Richardson Avenue by Smith Engineering Company. And if you see the dark, um, dark rectangle on the east side of the property, that's the building footprint, the proposed building footprint. Okay. So in your packet, I show a Google Earth image looking south along Virginia Avenue from 10th Street at Roswell Ford's flood damaged fence. And that would be the line where the proposed building would be, that would be the edge. The staff photo looking east from Main Street at East 9th Street and northeast between North Main Street and North Virginia Avenue. And you can see the, the Ford building on the, the south edge of that property. And then on the south edge of 9th, 9th Street, and then you'll see 9th Street and then looking back toward the gas station and then the property under consideration. So the property under consideration is on the east side of the alley. And then there's a little bit of a picture here showing 9th Street looking from Virginia Ave, Avenue. And you can see the little corner where the fire hydrant is and, and that's, this is not a great view, but anyway, that's kind of gives you a little bit of context. And showing the buildings across the street on 9th Street. There's an excerpt from the 2016 Conference of Master Plan Preferred Land Use Scenario showing the property under consideration and, um, showing it in an industrial corridor next to the commercial corridor. And then also the hash line is, is the old MRA Railroad District. But it's been expanded since the, um, this concept was done in 2016. You can also see that this, um, the FEMA floodplain map on the next slide, this property is in the AH zone of, and, and is subject to the 1% annual chance of flood hazard. As of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Office has received zero written protest letters, zero verbal protests, and zero inquiries for zoning case VAR-25-0059. And again, the legal standard for zoning variance is the applicant must demonstrate an unnecessary hardship, a strict application of the setback requirements will require extraordinary hardships due to unique circumstances and a variance is necessary to overcome these difficulties. I keep forgetting to change the slide deck here. All right. So.
That's all, Meredith. Thank you.
I, I'm going to go ahead and do the same thing here. Because we did not waive the reading of the findings of the fact. So we talked about, um, all the land use and considerations. We, I do want to go over this with you. It's on page three of your, of page 53 of your packet. Number two, the proposed building is 256 feet in length and the proposed location is placement along the east property line parallel with North Virginia Avenue with a zero foot street side yard setback and a zero foot front yard setback on the property line parallel with the East 9th Street. And I showed you that corner on the slide there. Smith Engineering Company rendered the conceptual site plan showing the proposed building in dark gray along the east property line with a 15-foot rear yard setback, zero east street side yard setback and zero south side front yard setback. Buildings on the north side of 9th Street were damaged by the 750-year flood that occurred on October 19th, 2024. These buildings have been removed, including the car wash that was established on the south property line on the adjacent lot to the west of the property under consideration. And on that map, on, or on the conceptual site plan on page 53, you can see the buildings that were there before in white. And then the proposed new building. Number five on the next page, page 54, Roswell Zoning Ordinance 50, Section 3, Commercial and Industrial District specifies the following setbacks for the C1, C2, I-1 and I-2 zoning districts. A, front yard setback. The minimum setback shall be 40 feet or the same setback line established by an existing principal building on an adjacent lot within the same block, whichever is less. And so that car wash was on the front property line. So that would qualify. Uh, B, side yard setback. Where the side yard is on the street side of a corner lot, the minimum side, side yard setback shall be 30 feet or the setback line established by an existing principal building on an adjacent lot within the same block, whichever is less. And C, rear yard setback. The minimum setback shall not be less than 15 feet except where the rear lot line abuts a residential zoning district. And it does not, it abuts commercial. Okay? So. The conceptual site plan on the aerial map shows edges of buildings on surrounding lots to the east, west, north and south built on front street, uh, built on the front, street, side yard and rear property lines. These buildings were built between 1940 and 1979 according to the Chavez County Assessor information. Roswell Ford provided reasons for the variance request in Exhibit F of zoning case variance 25-050059. And then on page 55, there's a, a map of an aerial, Google Earth aerial of the vicinity. And the star is the property under consideration. And then again, the map with the flood damaged fence along the Virginia side, uh, showing the approximately, approximate location where the building would be located. The, uh, Virginia is a minor arterial. Main Street is a principal arterial. The property under consideration is in the revised railroad district MRA adopted by City Council in 2020. You saw the Conference of Master Plan map, the flood map. And then the legal standards are the same that we just went over. The legal standard for zoning variance in New Mexico requires the applicant to demonstrate unnecessary hardship. This involves showing that the parcel in question is distinguishable from other properties subject to the same zoning restrictions and that the requested variance is appropriate. And the body considering the variance must determine whether the condition or use of the property makes it exceptional in the sense of the application of zoning restrictions affects the property more harshly than other properties under the ordinance, thereby creating a particular hardship that deprives the owner of a reasonable return. And then the findings of fact, um, you can read the rest of that information on the variance there on page 58. But findings of fact, conclusions of law. A notice of the time and place of the public hearing for this case was published in the Roswell Daily Record at least 15 days prior to the date of the hearing. Notifications of the public hearing were mailed via certified mail with return receipt requested to property owners of record as shown by the Chavez County Assessor Maps, map with lots or land within 100 feet of the area under consideration excluding public rights away. This agenda, which includes this case, has been posted at City Hall and on the city of Roswell's website for over 72 hours as required by state of New Mexico law for a public hearing. The property under consideration is currently within the jurisdiction of the city of Roswell, New Mexico. Roswell Planning and Zoning Commission has jurisdiction to review this application. As of the time of this writing, the Planning and Zoning Office has received zero written protests, zero, zero verbal protests and zero inquiries. Number seven on page 59, the zoning ordinance, Article 3, Section 10A states, "The Planning and Zoning Commission may approve a variance to the zoning requirements for a property if the reason for the request variance is due to the property being of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, or having topographical or other extraordinary conditions which prevent the property owner from being able to comply with the zoning requirements. And if this restrict application of this ordinance would result in a peculiar, exceptional or undue hardship as opposed to a mere inconvenience upon the property owner." In Section D, um, "The Planning and Zoning Commission shall decide whether or not to approve a variance request based on all oral and written statements from the applicant, the public, the city staff and its own members. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall also consider the effect of the proposed variance upon neighborhood traffic, the public health, safety and welfare of the community. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall not approve a variance unless it is satisfied that the request will alleviate some unusual hardship. It is consistent with the general intent of this ordinance that conforms to the Conference of Master Plan, City Land use plan, and that it is in the public interest and, and not solely in the interest of the applicant." And then, um, you may approve, deny or table the variance request for not more than one regularly scheduled commission meeting. Or for a period of time specified at the hearing. So. The commission is requested to make a motion and to vote on this zoning case. Unless it's appealed, it does not go to City Council. The, the final decision is with this body. I stand for questions. And Scott Hicks and Toby Gross are here to speak on behalf of the case.
Thank you, Meredith. Commissioners, any questions of Meredith?
We don't have anybody from City Engineer's Office, but are there any concerns from the engineer as far as sightlines, traffic, that sort of thing?
No, they expressed no, no, no considerations. And if you'll see on that, um, conceptual site plan, there's a notch there at the corner. And so that is for clear sight trinkle purposes. That, that would be on the... Well, it would be on the north. Well, on the, of the property, yeah. It'd be on the southeast corner of the property, for sure.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Meredith. All right. Moving on, um, public comment, not public comments, oh, I wish. Those wishing to speak in favor of case VAR-25-0059, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Staff. My name is Scott Hicks. I'm the Smith Engineering, 401 North Penn. If I may, I'd like to hand out a, a bigger conceptual plan than what you have there since we don't have it on.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a little bit more of the picture here than on the eight and a half.
Thank you. So, yeah, that's a lot easier to.
Okay. So, uh, as Meredith stated, Roswell Ford is wanting to build a, a fleet service center or fleet service bays. And that will serve some of the larger trucks on the chassis of 550s like you see on the railroad trucks that drive up and down the railroad to service those, those type of chassis. In order to do that, uh, there are certain criteria that the Ford corporate folks have put out that they have to meet. So we need as much room as possible on that parcel to operate internal circulation, staging and parking of vehicles that are getting serviced. So by setting this building as far east as we can, it gives us the ability to do that between the alley and the front of that service a building. And I want to point out that, um, we set it at the same, you know, just like Meredith said, we set it at the same zero front yard setback that was established by the car wash many years ago. It was built in the early eighties. And it's in that same block. Obviously, the flood came and that damaged that building as well as the other two. Those had to be taken down. But other buildings are going to be put back in, in the same fashion in the future. So we're holding that same front yard setback. So now it becomes a side yard setback. And that's where the variance comes in that we're asking for that. So that we can get as much room from the front to the alley to work in. And, and we really want to stress that this is already happening right here in the neighborhood, 60 feet to the south. That warehouse is set on the property line of Virginia on, on the side, the street side. Across the street to the east at the propane dealership, that building is set on that same property line on, on the right of way of Virginia, as well as just to the, the south of that building. All of those three buildings within sixty to eighty feet of this corner are already on the Virginia property line. And so this building would be doing nothing different than is already occurring in the, in the properties just across the street to the south and to the east. We do have, like Greg asked, or Commissioner Holman asked about the, the site triangle there, we are proposing a, a notch there to get that. And when you pull up to that stop sign, that will allow full visibility to the north, if you're making a left-hand turn or, or right, to see traffic coming from the, from the north. We do not encroach into the rear yard setback that's already established with, with the fifteen foot in the I one zoning. So we don't have to have a variance there. And you can see by the diagram there that we have about a hundred, about a hundred and sixty feet to work with if we have our building setback like we're requesting for approval tonight, all the way back against the east side. So again, stressing industrial zoning. Obviously, it's the, you know, this type of business, this nature for the neighborhood. We're not doing any different than it's already there. It's very much exactly just like you see on the other properties. And it will allow to meet the criteria set by Ford, as well as for the staff at Ford to operate internally there with the vehicles, parking, staging, and, you know, coming in and out of that area there by the, the service bays. So those are the reasons why. I'll stand for any questions. And of course, Toby with Roswell Ford is here to speak as well.
Commissioner?
I have a question. Will this encroach on the sidewalk that's already built?
No, that sidewalk is within the right of way, and this will not go any further than the property line. So that sidewalk will remain.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other questions of Mr. Smith?
Yeah, is, is, are these bays going to be pull-through bays? So, so you're entering, exiting off of Virginia and the parking lot side, or, or they're just off of parking lot side?
Just off the parking lot side.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the, wishing to speak in favor of case VAR two five dash zero zero five nine?
I'm here to speak on case twenty-five zero zero five nine.
Welcome.
As an owner representative and construction company that's going to build the site. Basically, in layman's terms, if you look at what we're trying to do, it is pull in, back out. That's why we need the room on this side. We're for the, if, if we don't get this variance, we're going to build a fence there anyway. So if you just envision this building as a big tall fence, that's what it is. We, we are allowed to build the fence where we're asking to build the building. We're asking to put a building in its place. There is homeless issues over there. It's really a dumpy part of town. It's not very good place. We have a lot of traffic through there. We want to fence it. We want to partition it off. We have addressed the site triangle. We've addressed the building height code, every other code and, and ordinance that there are. As far as I know, we've done it. The hardship in our case would be if we have to set the building to thirty feet back. First of all, it's just wasted land on, on the east side. It's really nothing, no, nowhere land. It just sits there. And it, if you envision thirty feet, that's, that's more than a car length. It's, it's thirty-six, thirty-eight parking spots that, now, we could still go over and park on the opposite side of the building if we had to move the building over. But it's, it's just not productive. We're, we're trying to make a major investment in Roswell. We've had some difficulties behind us. We've regrouped and we're trying to put this deal together. And it's a very significant investment in Roswell. I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I would also say it seems to be a very I was just going to comment that it seems to be a really significant capital investment in, in that flood zone area that, that would
It is.
really be built.
And, and, and that, that cost is, on top of this, the flood insurance monthly premium is outrageous, but we have to do it. It, it will be Ford financed building, so it has to be covered by flood insurance.
Can't imagine the bills would be jumping it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak in favor of case VAR two five dash zero zero five nine? I would imagine not so. There's nobody else here. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of case VAR two five dash zero zero five nine or have questions or concerns? I don't think there's anyone online, is there, on the phone? No. Okay. Being there none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion based on the land uses zoning considerations, finding of fact, conclusions of law surrounding land uses, regulations established in the zoning ordinance, and the following reasons. I would say the development of the property benefits the community, creates jobs, is in keeping with the neighborhood buildings that are already in place on the property lines. So this isn't anything new. Those are the reasons I am motioning to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henderson to approve VAR two five dash zero zero five nine. And we have a second from Commissioner Holman. Would you like a roll call vote or voice vote is fine? Voice vote is fine. All in favor? Hi. All against? None? Motion passes? Gentlemen? Thank you. Moving on. And thanks for your time and investment in the community. We appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on, item G, other business. Do we have any other business to talk about? None. Announcements? Meredith always has announcements for us.
Chair Aguilar, Commissioners. So there is a couple things. The Conference of Master Plan is still underway, and they're still taking survey input. They have collected about two hundred surveys from the online survey so far. It's still up. It's on the city website on the front page. You can access that survey. So the, the more community input we have, the merrier. So please go ahead and look on the city website and get your friends and family members and, and everybody to fill out that survey. And then there's also the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aesthetics Master Plan. They also have a, a survey probably or information here. Oh, it's a public survey as well. So you can scan this on your phone and probably go to NMDOT also and find this. And the next meeting will be held on August fifth, twenty twenty.
Awesome. Any other announcements? Anybody? I think that's it. No public comments? All right, we adjourn. It is seven sixteen.